The time is 6:01. Today's date is October the 9th, 2017. This is a regular board meeting of Weslaco ISD School District. Item number two, Establishment of Quorum. Let the record reflect that we have a full quorum. Item number three, Opening Prayer, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we have Justice Raul A. Gonzalez Elementary Principal, Mrs. Rosa Garcia, who will deliver the invocation. Welcome, Mrs. Garcia.
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day, Father. We thank you, Lord, for your goodness, Lord, and your faithfulness to each one of us, Heavenly Father. And I thank you, Father, for the opportunity that you give many of us, Lord, to work with children and to work in this district, Lord. I pray, Heavenly Father, every day, that our districts set their eyes on you, set their eyes on kids' success, Heavenly Father. We thank you, Lord. It is a privilege to serve in this capacity, Heavenly Father, to serve children, and we thank you for that. Father God, we thank you for Dr. Canales, Heavenly Father. Thank you for sending her, Heavenly Father, to this place. You have a very special purpose for her life, Father, and I thank you for her life, Heavenly Father. I thank you for each board member, Father. As their heads of household, Heavenly Father, we know, Lord, that they're the pillars of their home, Lord. They're also the pillars, Heavenly Father, of our district, Lord, as they make decisions for our kids every time they meet, Lord, and I'm sure that they spend their days thinking about our kids, Lord, and what is best for them. So I thank you. I pray very special blessing over them, guidance, Lord, and above all, wisdom, Lord, to make the decisions that need to be made for our students and our staff, Heavenly Father. I also pray for our staff as they work with kids, Heavenly Father, every single day. It's a tough job, and I just pray, Lord, that you bless them, Lord, that you give them wisdom, Heavenly Father, and understanding, Lord. Above all, Lord, that you take care of them physically, Lord, health-wise, Lord, and spiritually as well. We ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Moving on to item... Thank you very much for that prayer. Beautiful.
It's beautiful.
Moving on to item number four, Pledge of Allegiance, Texas Pledge, Dr. Canales.
Mr. Robleto will be presenting our students, who will be saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes. Good afternoon, good evening. I would like to welcome up here to the front of y'all. Can please step forward Hector Jared Cervantes and his sister Isabella Mia Cervantes. And let me introduce them before they start the pledge. Isabella Mia Cervantes is a second grade student at Gonzalez Elementary, home of the super leaders, and is the daughter of Hector and Olga Linda Cervantes. Isabella is a Quest student and is currently a storytelling UIL participant. Out of all her classes, her favorite class is reading. Isabella is lit for literacy. She loves to read chapter books, and her goal for this school year is to become a Super Word Millionaire, though through the Accelerated Reader Program. Outside of school, she actively participates in dance lessons where she will be receiving her fifth-year award recognition during the summer 2017 recital. Her goal is to attend UTRGV after high school graduation and become a second-grade teacher at Gonzalez Elementary. Also here this evening, we have Hector Jared Cervantes, and he is a fifth-grade student, another Gonzalez Elementary Super Reader. He is also the son of Hector and Olga Linda Cervantes. Hector is a Quest student and is currently a UIL participant. Hector has a passion for reading and has earned the Super Word Millionaire status for the past two years through the Accelerated Reader Program. Leader in Me Habit Two, Begin With The End In Mind is Hector's motto. With that said, Hector's goal is to graduate from high school and attend MIT to become the best mechanical engineer of his time. Hector has a second plan, and that is to attend UTSA to earn a degree in architecture. Joining our sister-brother duo this evening are the parents of brother Brian and sister Angela, Aunt Nancy, and Grandma Olga Perez. If they're here, can they please stand and be recognized? If everyone can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Good job. Very good job. Isabella, that's a beautiful dress you're wearing. It would be rude for me not to mention that and recognize your pretty dress. Moving on to item number five is Awards and Recognitions, Dr. Canales.
Hey, Board of Trustees, we have no awards and recognitions this evening.
That was fast. Moving on to item number six, Proclamation for Texas Education Human Resources Day, October 10th, 2017.
All right. Well, Ms. Drew, if you could please stand. I think she's in the Human Resource Department. As we read a proclamation here this evening for Human Resources Day. Whereas Human Resources Division is instrumental in recruiting, selecting, resourcing, retaining quality staff and support, and providing an excellent education for all students; and whereas Human Resources plays a key role in fostering satisfaction and loyalty among employees by allowing for professional growth and development, and keeping employees informed about policies, working conditions, compensation, and benefits; and whereas Human Resources monitors and manages current and future workforce trends, organizational culture, legal and legislative trends, and ethical and social responsibility; therefore, let it be resolved that Erasmo Lopez, WISD School Board President, does hereby support and proclaim October 10th, 2017, as Texas Education Human Resource Day.
Congratulations.
Do you have a speech?
Just thank you on behalf of my staff. They're the hardest-working people, and we can only do what we do because of the good help that we have.
Thank you for all your work. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number seven, Proclamation for Red Ribbon Week.
Correct.
October 23rd through 27th.
All right, Ms. Drew.
2017.
You're heading up our Red Ribbon Week festivities. So whereas National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in Weslaco ISD during the week of October 23rd through October 27th; and whereas the Weslaco Independent School District and the City of Weslaco are coordinating this grassroots community awareness program in united effort with representatives throughout the community; and whereas businesses, government, law enforcement, school, religious institutions, service organizations, youth, medical, senior citizens, military, sports teams, and individuals will demonstrate their commitment to drug- and alcohol-free, healthy lifestyles; therefore, let it be resolved that Erasmo Lopez, Weslaco ISD School Board President, does hereby proclaim October 23rd through October 27th, 2017, as Red Ribbon Week.
Item number eight, Proclamation for Dyslexia Awareness Month, October 2017.
Special ed? Anybody here from the Special Ed department, please? All right, okay. Whereas dyslexia is a language-based learning disability which often limits a student's ability to succeed in a traditional classroom setting; and whereas neurological in origin, dyslexia affects the way the brain processes information and is a leading cause of difficulties in reading, writing, and spelling; and whereas special education opportunities, including highly-trained teachers, multisensory learning programs, and individualized instruction, are vital to the dyslexic person's future success; therefore, I, for Erasmo Lopez, President of the Weslaco Independent School Board of Trustees, does hereby proclaim October 27th as Dyslexia Awareness Month.
We have a little token of appreciation.
Come on. We should be giving you something.
Yeah.
It should be the other way around.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We just want to say thank you for all the support for our dyslexia program. These are kids who have the difficulty with the reading and the writing, and all that we propose, y'all have been, you know, there, ready and willing, so we really appreciate y'all.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
For all the hard work you all go through and y'all do.
Thank you.
Item number nine, Proclamation for Principals Month, October 2017.
All right. If we have any principals here, can they please stand and be recognized? All right. As school leaders, principals are entrusted with our most valuable resource, our young people. These students are our promise for the future, and it is absolutely critical that they receive a rigorous, well-rounded education. Principals are more than just caretakers of their school. Principals are expected to be educational leaders, disciplinarians, community builders, spokesmen, budget analysts, and guardians of policy mandates and initiatives. Principals set the academic tone for their school and work collaboratively with teachers to maintain high curriculum standards, develop mission statements, and set performance objectives. The National Association of Elementary School Principals and the National Association of Secondary School Principals, joined by their state affiliates, the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association, and the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals, have designated the month of October as a time to recognize the contributions of elementary, middle, and high school principals. Therefore, Erasmo Lopez, Weslaco ISD School Board President, does hereby support and proclaim October 2017 as Principals Month. Out a big hand for our principals.
Thank you all so much for the hard work. This past weekend, we were at a conference, a school board conference, and that was in one session where I learned, we learned a lot of things every time we go, but I learned that the teacher and the principal are the two most important parts of a student's education. That as a teacher or a principal, you are able to either advance a child's learning by up to half his school year, or do it, if it goes not well, then you hold him back by half a year. So, you know, that fact being said, you know, I want y'all to, you know, I know y'all already knew that. I did not, you know, so I thank you for all your hard work and ask you to make sure that all our children are that half a year ahead and work towards that goal. And I do thank you wholeheartedly for all the hard work you do. I know that all you principals have our children's best interests and their education in your heart and in your mind, and thank you from this board member. Thank you so much. And I don't know if anybody else wants to add a few words or say something, or have I burned it over already? Said it all?
You said it all. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, principals. Thank you all so much for your work.
Take your luck and have a great year.
So it's not the board, it's the principals and the teachers. Thank you all. Moving on to item number 10, Public Comments. We have one person that signed up for public comments. Her name is Stephanie Rivera. I have to read something to you before you start, okay?
Yeah.
You are to address only matters that concern the school district. You are not to attack any district employee or board member. We will not tolerate any disruptive behavior by any member of the audience. If you do not abide, you will be directed to cease and leave the meeting. Now, if you'll give us your name and your address, and then you can go ahead and start, and you'll have five minutes.
Sure. My name is Stephanie Rivera. My address is 321 West Palm. My address.
That's good. That's good.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the board. My name is Stephanie Rivera, and I'm here to advocate and voice my concern as a parent of two dyslexic children. To begin with, do any of our board members know how many identified dyslexic students we have in our district? Do we know at what grade or age our students are being tested or referred, and how long the process takes for our students to be actually identified? Again, if our district is the right choice, then where is the accountability and the fidelity to our dyslexic program? As a parent and a teacher, I have experienced and witnessed firsthand the lack of attention to IEPs that students have in place. Our program has no training for students or for teachers to understand and see through the eyes and the mind of a dyslexic child. I'm asking for you, the board, to take a closer look at our district's dyslexic program in the best interest of our students, and to revamp procedures in preparing our teachers to assist our students in the elementary and secondary level who are dyslexic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We cannot comment on your concerns, but I will ask our superintendent to look into it and follow up with the board at a later date. I think there's a...
No. I think we do.
Thank you.
We'll do. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Item number 11, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, for the report, we're going to cover student enrollment, ADA, insurance in the newsletter, public information, the communication plan, and the dyslexia program. So we begin with student enrollment and ADA. Okay, this is it. District enrollment comparison, we're looking at the first six weeks enrollment, 2016-2017 to the current school year, 2017-2018. At the end of six weeks last year, we're at 17,362. We're currently at 17,096. Again, this is enrollment. We are still expecting to have about 280 more students enrolled as part of the Head Start Program and Progresso and Donna. That's coming, and we're expecting migrant students, late arrivals, migrant staff has confirmed that, and we're expecting over 200? 229 students to come in later in the year. So we're looking at those numbers carefully. You heard Andres address this earlier. Not only are two assistant superintendents, or HR, or business office, we're looking at it weekly. We get reports weekly. And then we're having conversations with principals, and we also have conversations with directors and activities to talk about how can we keep our students. Okay, if you look at elementary, if you look at the next slide, the greatest difference happens to be in elementary schools, where we had 8,364 in 2016-2017, and 8,065 now. That's a difference of 299. Our middle schools have increased by about 120 students. Our high schools have decreased, 79 students. Alternative schools, 35. And our Alpha Academy has increased by 27, where we're expecting 280 more soon. Okay, does that conclude the report?
Dr. Canales, I know that you have your meetings with other valley superintendents at a regular time or from time to time. Is there discussion between superintendents of other towns as to what they're doing on trying to get their kids back or trying to retain their students?
There is a discussion about the greatest losses that some of the districts in our area and in other areas are facing have to do with elementary and the number of charter schools that are opening up. Conversations have stemmed around communication and clear communication about what is it that a public school offers that a charter or private school cannot offer. Other regions in the state have collaborated across multiple school districts for Go Public. Region One presented that to the superintendents. We haven't in Region One come up with a plan for that, but it's basically where you unite efforts and resources so that together ISDs talk about the importance of public ed.
Okay. Well, I'll ask you to challenge all your peers to come up with some ideas that public education can retain our students, and I know that we're doing our part here and moving forward with programs and offering other activities and classes for our students to retain them, so.
The main thing here is marketing.
Yeah.
Everywhere. And I don't know how much we're doing here, but we need to go ahead and continue doing that. Marketing our school district.
Yep. I was going to say, I think we should also reverse the question. I think it's a good question that we ask, what can we offer that charter schools can't? But I think we should also ask, what are the charter schools offering that parents of students think that we don't offer? And maybe if we can identify that, we can use that, the attack of the marketing, to say, hey, we've got everything we need.
They're doing the same thing, except they market better.
Yeah, and we also have the, you'll get a report on this, the survey result from our marketing firm that was hired back in the spring with a survey that went out to idea parents, asking why charters, not Weslaco ISD. So we'll be sharing that with you in this week's board update.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Canales, before we go into the insurance and before I excuse myself, just a quick question. I was looking at the numbers from the first slide. In reference to our junior highs, I know we're plus 120. I know Central is down, but is our alignment, where we align the, realign the district? Are we starting to see these numbers correlate with what y'all had brought before the board?
Yeah, we see the increase at Mary Hug. So it's with the realignment.
So QAD's increase also is because of our realignment? Okay.
You know, I hate to bring up a topic or a comment that I need to say, that as in reference to what Dr. Rivera said earlier during our workshop or our public hearing, as to if we start losing more students, we will have to let go of some teachers, you know, and once that starts happening, I think our employees that have students that work at other schools will start seeing that, and I hope that it helps them to make up the right decision and bring their kids back to Weslaco. You know, I'd hate to see anybody lose their job, however, as Dr. Rivera stated, I mean, it's, if we don't have the students or the students are moving along, then there's nothing else to do but to cut teachers. And it's a known fact that the only way a community or a district can survive is through growth, and population has to grow, and that's the prosperous thing to do, and if you have a population that is declining, it is not healthy. So I will ask all our teachers wholeheartedly to please keep your kids here, bring them back, and we are a good district here in Weslaco. I mean, I believe all of us here came here, graduated from here, with the exception of Dr. Rivera, but he got here as fast as he could.
Fifty years ago.
And we're all here, so thank you, and that was all I need to say on that topic. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, for the next part of the report, Mr. Del Rosso will walk us through this one. It's our health insurance program and the new newsletter.
Good evening, Dr. Canales, Mr. Lopez, members of the board. This is the standard insurance slide that we show every month. We are in one month with our new third-party administrator. So as far as medical claims go, and I'm going to round up if that's okay with y'all. Medical claims in September, this time last year, is approximately $959,000. Blue Cross did start this month adjudicating claims, so they processed approximately $236,000 worth of claims. And also, the runout from our prior TPA is approximately $615,000. That's a grand total of $851,061.15 in claims. That's a decrease of approximately $108,000 less this month versus September of 2016. Prescription drugs, last year in September, we spent $286,811.83 versus this year, the month of September, $239,341.56. That is also a decrease of approximately $47,000, $47,470.27 to be exact. Fixed costs, these are the costs that we pay the administrator, of course, to adjudicate our claims. Last year was approximately, or actually, $223,192.14. This year with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, it's $244,083.20, a little bit of an increase. Also, we do have to pay for our runout, so we do pay the prior TPA, $61,480, to administer our claims for the runout. That totals out to $305,563.20. That is an $82,000 increase. So overall, this month, 1.4, actually 1.5 million last year versus 1.4 approximately this month. So that is a, that's a little decrease of approximately $73,000.
That's good.
This is the, I'm going to go into the workers' comp section now. This is the annual, I guess, report that I'd like to show the board of how we're doing. We didn't get to it last month. I didn't have all the data and time, but this gives a five-year trend of our total claims incurred as of August 31, '27. So as of 16, '17, we incurred approximately $370,346.73 versus last year of $354,512.40. And as you can tell, they're broken down. The red indicates temporary disability payments. That includes, that's the actual salary or benefits that we pay employees while they're off work, and then, of course, then the medical bills, they're broken down there. So as you can see, that there's a nice little trend downward over the past two years. In 2015, 2016 is when we initiated our 504 network. So we have seen significant savings as a result while still providing excellent care to our employees who do suffer work-related injuries. These are the total claims incurred. These are total paid on all claims for last fiscal year. So for 16, '17, we paid approximately $254,000. Now, that's paid, actually. These numbers will go up, they will fluctuate, actually, throughout the course of the years because, of course, we're still paying on claims from 14, from 12, '13, 14, '15. We still have some old claims that are still pending out there. But again, you can see the positive trend that we had since we started our 504 network. We've saved a significant amount of money in our workers' compensation program. And this is the average cost per claim. This is just more of a, for the board's information only, and it's broken down by medical indemnity and then the total average. So last year, we had 111 claims, or actually, I'm sorry, 16, '17, there was 101 claims filed. In 15, '16, there was 105 claims filed. So that's basically the average amount that we pay per claim. And I believe that is it. Oh, I'm sorry. We did put together, does anybody have any questions on that before I move on to the newsletter?
I just want to make a comment that, Mike, I'm real happy with the trend we have going here on the workers' comp. I doubt you can get it much lower without affecting our care. The one thing I do want to say is that, you know, pretty much all board members here, well, of course, we are from the community, we would have heard by now if somebody was being left out or not being cared for, and we have not heard anything, or nothing has come forward. So you're doing a good job, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. Thank you. And of course, if y'all do hear that, please let me know because we'll address it.
Oh, we will.
We will address it immediately. We did put out a risk management newsletter this month. We sent this to all employees. We did have some very good response to it. I'm going to see if I can, it's, oops, no, it didn't work. It's supposed to open up by double-clicking it. Nope, I guess it didn't work. Well, I have a hard copy that I'll pass out to you all, but basically what we did...
We have one? We have a copy?
Yes. That's just the first page, though. There's two other pages. So basically, what we did was what we put out some health tips for the employees to read every month. This month was things to eat, healthy snack alternatives, exercise programs, and things to do kind of to increase your cardiovascular activity. Also, we did, we just had our flu shot clinic this past week, so we did have a lot of employees take advantage of the program that we had at the USDA building. We have it every year. Also, there's just information on benefits. We did, of course, we did make some changes this fiscal year with our health insurance and our pharmacy benefit manager. So that was just some contact information on who to call if you have any issues, and of course, there is a nice picture of myself and my staff there, and they do a great job. So we did have a very good positive response from it, so we plan on doing this, depending on how much material... on how much material, monthly or quarterly, but it's something that we will continue to do.
Is it up on the website?
No.
Okay.
We can put it on there. It was emailed to every staff member, so.
Can you send it to us from?
Yeah, let's get a copy.
Yes.
I think that when Blue Cross made her presentation over the summer, they indicated they can provide programs for the teachers, is that right, about healthy lifestyles or something like that?
They do have, and we had it, we had it with them when Blue Cross was here three years ago. There is a website that they have that you can log on to and, and, and put your, whatever physical activity you did. And then, of course, you can win prizes and all that. The problem was that it was very expensive and we had very, very low participation
Okay.
on it. So, it wasn't cost effective.
Mike, what percentage of the staff on the flu shots took advantage of it?
I don't have an exact number. It's gonna go in the update. I haven't gotten the invoice yet.
So, they, they could only go to the USDA? Or I mean, the, what was it where they had to go?
The USDA clinic. Yes, yes, sir.
So, what about the ones that maybe did the principals allow them during the conference? Or have you ever thought about having it at each particular school where more stu- staff members will take advantage of it?
We've thought about it, but it's more expensive to send the pharmacist to, you know, fourteen, eight, or to the different campuses or different buildings. So, it's more cost effective to have it on one, one location. But employees, if they missed it, they can still get it at no cost if they go to HEB or through their doctor's office. It's still a covered benefit. But for them to go out and visit all the schools, it's more expensive. It'd be more expensive than, you know, than what we pay for the actual shot.
Okay. Mike, I, I know you said right now that the newsletter would be depending on the information that comes in. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to please make it customary, and either you're gonna make it every monthly or quarterly or whatever it is. That way, our staff knows that come once a month, or come every quarter, or every two months, there's gonna be a newsletter that they can read up on.
Yes, sir.
If they need to look for phone numbers, they know that that newsletter, they can look it up. It's coming. And maybe little pointers. I think everybody likes to get a, a little hint on, on how to save money. And I'm sure you, you've got plenty, plenty of those in this newsletter, if, if you can tell them what to do with medications and whatnot, you know? Just, just saying that you can, I'm sure you can help them.
Tricks of the, tricks of the trades here, yes.
And I'm sorry I used that whatnot word. That's, I don't know where I got that.
Mike, and, and even though it didn't, you know, maybe work out three years ago with the programs, you know, it won't hurt to revisit and see if there's any changes or different programs that they might have, you know, for health fairs, health screenings, things like that.
We are, we are working on, we do different things throughout the year. We do do also a blood screening. Unfortunately, we didn't do it last year. And that's another, another issue in itself. But I am getting quotes from companies to come and do it this year. So, hopefully, we're shooting for February of eighteen. And that's when they come to each campus individually and run the blood check, blood screening. So, we've done that for years. Last year, fortunately, there was a problem with the vendor that, that used to do them for us. We weren't able to do it, but we are gonna do it this year, definitely. Thank you. Thank you.
For our next report, we have a presentation on communication by our public information officer, Spindi Munoz, and K West Department Lead Head, Carlos Robledo.
Hey, Dr. Gonzalez, Mr. Lopez, and board members. The K West Department and the Public Information Office recently came together to put together a communication plan. And so, this is a work in progress, but tonight, I'm going to present the highlights of our plan that we're working on. So, the major function of our departments, K West and the Public Information Office, is obviously to assist the superintendent, our cabinet, our principals, and our departments with any publicity needs that they might have. They usually contact us and, and let us know if a teacher or a student or a class is maybe doing something, you know, extraordinary or special. And so, then we, we assist with the publicity, whether they're signing a college, or a letter of intent for a college, or UIL winners, or arts, or band. So, it, we're here to assist with that. Okay, we also promote the vision, the mission, and the goals of our district. And we've done that through different avenues. We, we obviously produce all the flyers and notices for that. We promote student achievement. One of the biggest events that is very popular that parents look for, look forward to is our news page with the UIL winners. We have two district elementary meets, and they, parents are waiting for that page to come out so they can clip out their little kids, their students, or their kid's picture on it. We also keep all our stakeful, stakeholders informed with any district-wide announcements that are coming, that are coming up. Recently, we, K West and the information office, Public Information Office, we came together to formulate a, a campaign. And we came together and we put together The Right Choice TV spots. I'm, I'm sure you were well aware of the TV spots that were airing.
They've been running, they ran all summer. They ran all summer. They actually started in, in May.
Also, during the summer, we did billboards. We do have a permanent billboard outside our stadium, but we acquired two additional billboards. This one was, one of them was in Mercedes, and the other one was across Arturos, where we were promoting The Right Choice, our district as The Right Choice. We did do a newspaper ad with the, with the monitor and the Mid Valley Town Crier. You see that to the extreme right, The Right Choice, and is your child getting a complete education? We also did a lot of geo-fencing, and Carlos can probably describe that a little bit better.
Well, we did some digital campaigns. I mean, one of the things you have to definitely do nowadays is reach out digitally. That's through the internet, online, Facebook, social media. And through geo-fencing, if you, you can, you can grab a certain location, like you say, the Real Grand Valley Livestock Show, you know, there's gonna be a lot of kids there, there's gonna be a lot of parents there. You can actually make sure that your ad pops up in that location while someone is on their phone. That's what geo-fencing is. And that's what we did. We did, we've been doing that lately.
And we also brought our campaign forth to different county, city, and community events. We were at the Onion Fest, passing out information about registration, and we've been to the Alfresco events as well.
How do you measure the success of the, of the campaign?
Well, that's, that's a good question. And the ultimate success is for our enrollment to increase. You know, that is exactly what we're looking for. But there are other ways of, of doing that as well. And one of the ways is, well, we've done a survey, and we had our marketing company that we're working with do the survey. So, we could always go back in a year and do a survey again and see, see if those perceptions have changed at all. So, that's another way of measuring your success.
Okay.
Is going out to the public, asking them if they've seen our ads, and if their mind has changed at all about our school district.
Okay.
Okay, and this is how we pass on information to our internal audiences and our students and our employees. We do have the flyers and brochures broadcast on K West and YouTube. They're very popular. We do also put a lot of things on social media or Facebook and Twitter accounts. We recently, with the technology department, we revamped our website. It's a little bit more user-friendly and a lot more colorful and more technology, user-friendly. And we also put together, this is brand new, we put together a board bulletin that we send out to staff to let them know about all the board action that was, that took place at that board meeting. So, we do, we do send that out through the staff email. Okay, we also address our external audiences, and that's the business, community, and parents. We have run The Right Choice news page for the past twenty years, every week. Dr. Rivera was very instrumental in getting that off the ground a long time ago. And so, we're still continuing. It's been, it is very popular. We do run it every week, every Wednesday in the Mid Valley Town Crier. I believe we may be the only school district that does this continuously for the past twenty or so years. I remember Patrick Kennedy was in one of the articles in the news page when he was in the sixth grade. And so, we, we, we do publish this information every week. I know that some districts, some districts wait till the end of the semester to publish something and put it together and send it out. We do it every week. Also, K West, they do a lot of broadcasts, and of course, the YouTube channel is where everybody seems to be going nowadays. We do have our WISD billboard across the stadium to advertise our major accomplishments. Again, we use the WISD website is a, is a big tool to distributing information, Facebook and Twitter, and maybe we're coming along with Snapchat. We might add that on also. Another way that we disseminate information is, of course, preparing materials for the town hall meetings. This is new. Also, this year, our coffee conversation in connection with our superintendent. So, she's, she's doing a lot of face-to-face with our parents and getting information out to our, from our district. Also, new this year, we're currently putting together a district magazine. So, we should be getting it published sometime in November. And it'll highlight the major stories in our district to the community. Another external audience that we deal with is media. Typically, they come around when something's going on in our district. But what we try to do is we try to send them press releases about things that we're working on. So, most recently, they did a story, I think on Channel twenty-three, our swimming academy. So, they came and did, do a piece on that. And they also are coming tomorrow for our Encourage program. So, getting the media to come is a very easy, free way to get publicity, publicity out there. And of course, the Public Information Office also facilitates the interviews. You know, we set up appointments when the news people, the media can come in and do a story on us. Additional functions? Scoreboard advertising?
Scoreboard advertising. Scoreboard advertising been done for the past ten years. We, we continue to do that. We almost, we, we try to sell out everything that we can. There's about twenty-five announcements that we do during the games, plus commercials and, and other advertising on the scoreboard as well. And me and the crew at K West, we're, we're in charge of all that. And, but we're also using the scoreboard also to promote our kids as well. We do have our athlete of the week, our academic student of the week, our band student of the week, our drill team members also as well. So, we do use the scoreboard to, to promote our school district in front of a captive audience.
Okay, these are just some of the events that the Public Information Office works with K West also. District convocation, that's a multi-departmental endeavor. A lot of departments come together to, to make sure that is a hit. We have the Public Information Fair. We've done this also for a while now. And this is when teachers, on their workday, right before the first day of school, they get to take a little break from putting their classroom together, and they come to the information fair and look at the different vendors and different businesses that are available in our community. They get door prizes, and so they look forward to that little break between, between their workday. We also do, of course, the student recognition. Our office handles all the materials, and we put all the materials together for your, the students that we bring before you. We also handle the proclamations, like we just did now. Principal recognition, K West recently put a back-to-school video with our superintendent to welcome all our staff back to the first years, to the first day of school. K West does the football pre and post-game shows. We also do the soccer games and the basketball games, and, and of course, the volleyball games and the track meets as well. The Public Information Office handles the Teacher of the Year reception, and we celebrate our Teachers of the Year. And we're very proud to have you all come and attend our luncheon. We also handle the service awards reception. Our district celebrates every employee that's been with our district five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty-five years, and so on. And, and so, it's, it's always good for us to celebrate that they, you know, they're loyal to our district. And then, we also host the retiree reception in conjunction with Human Resources. We, we work out, work that out. The Public Information handles the request for information. Also, all the principals, we, we held a little seminar, you know, where we're, we let the principals know, every request for information comes to our office. And so, we work together with our attorney to make sure that we're following the Public Information Act procedures. We also publish the student academic calendar every year for all our staff and students. We do give a birthday card on behalf of the superintendent to all our employees to celebrate their birthday. And we also handle other promotional items district-wide. So, when we have dignitaries, students and staff, or visitors, there's another way that we can market our district. So, we really appreciate and are grateful for any feedback that you might have at this point.
Carl, I guess Carlos. Is there any way of monitoring the viewing audience on K West? To, how many people are watching?
On, on K West, I'll have to talk to Spectrum to see if there's any way. What happens is there's, there's a, a book that is sent out. You know, there's Arbitron, and there, they do, what's it called, when they do ratings.
Right.
And so, I don't know if, you know, people are writing on there because it's, it's something that you get at the house. I don't know if we're coming out on the ratings at all. I, I'll look into that, though.
And, and the reason I'm asking is because if we're putting something on there that's, nobody's watching.
Right.
I mean, we're just burning free airtime that we could be promoting our district or doing something. What I'm trying to say is, and, and at this point, I don't think, and I don't know, maybe, I'm wrong. Do we have any student broadcasters? Anybody that comes out on an interview, making an interview, a student on a student?
Okay.
Do we have anything like that right now?
No, we don't.
You know, and, and I believe that, you know.
We'd have to look for somebody who would qualify, who would be able to do something like that and to come across as, as a professional, you know, because we try to have a certain level of professionalism.
And, and of course, it wouldn't be live because it would have to be, you know, make sure that it's edited and that, that it's formatted right and, and all the words are correct. But what I'm trying to say is that we need to create something that a kid, our students would say, you know what, I know that I, that we come on at three forty-five or four thirty, turn on the TV. Hey, Mom, turn on the TV. Dad, you know, tío, tío, I'm gonna be on, you know? And, and, and create that, that.
Appointment TV.
Yeah, I wanna watch it. I wanna see myself, hey, this is a good, this is a good show coming up. It's about the football players. It's about the basketball players. It's about just a regular student. Somebody's gonna get interviewed, and nobody knows. And, and sometimes it's funny, sometimes it's just good, you know? Get, get, get something that our students, you know, inter- interview a third grader, you know? What, what are his dreams? And then interview him again when, when he gets older, you know? And then maybe we, we can run a story and, and make it interesting to where people will wanna watch it.
Right.
You know, and, and, and will. And of course, we, I would like to know if, if there is a way to monitor the amount of viewers that we have, that we know it's working.
Well, most of, just about eighty percent of our programming, we do put all of our pro, we do have a TV guide. So, our TV guide is publicized on our website every week, and it's updated. It's also on K West. We can probably put it out on social media as well so people will know about it.
Yeah.
But it is on our website, and it's on the K West page. So, when they click on there, they'll be able to see it. We also upload a lot of our programming onto YouTube. And on YouTube, we can gauge how many people have seen our programming.
Right.
And we know what is popular, what is not popular, which is gonna get more hits. We put a lot of, of our videos on Facebook as well. And we're also looking into doing an on-demand system as well. There are a lot of cities and school districts, not here in the valley, but that have an on-demand system where they can go online and they can watch all the programming on demand. So, it's something that our crew at K West has already been looking into. And that'll make it a lot more accessible for the community to watch it, whether they have a computer or whether they have regular television. I know also one more point. Whenever we do have any issues with K West, whether sometimes they can't hear the program, or there's not a program on, we do hear from the community just out and about, walking at HEB, you know, at the football games. I have had people that have approached me with comments about the programming on television. So, I know they're watching. It's kinda hard to gauge, but you do hear, you know, just being out in the community, that they, that they, there are people that are watching.
I, I remember back in the nineties, Wesaco High used to have a scripted TV show. I think it was called Heartbreak High. Do you remember what it was called?
It was Mary Hope Junior, Mary Hope Academy.
Oh, it was Mary Hope. Okay. Yeah, that was, I used to watch it as a kid.
The, your live, the live graduation is also very popular. I know that people, grandparents tune into the live graduation programming.
Well, I wanna create some excitement. I mean, that, that'll, that'll catch people, that'll bring people in, that'll, that the kids will wanna watch, that the parents are gonna watch. And, and I'm gonna challenge the principals, principals? Hello? Anyway, I'm gonna challenge the principals to, to bring forward names of their students that they feel could be a reporter or a broadcaster, or a, somebody that can interview, you know? We've all got our, our, our sharp, our kids and, 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 and somebody that you feel confident that, you know what, he'll make us proud. And, and. And, and bring them forward and then, uh, you know, pick one or two or three and then make it a contest to where, you know, the best one will be interviewed by, uh, Letty Valades or somebody like that, you know? And, and get a panel of judges to, to choose. And, and then run with those kids for, for six months or for, for a school year. And, and let them peer shadow or help you and, and interview some other kids and, and move forward and create excitement and, uh, get people wanting to watch. You know, I know I like to watch the football games. And when you talk, you, you do great, great work. By the way, I, I just wanna thank you for, I, I think you picked up the ball this weekend. I wanna send a, I hope he gets better, Marcos. I know he's, uh, have you heard on him or no?
Uh, I talked to him on Friday and he said that he was gonna be released this week. He had a lung infection, so hopefully he'll be okay and he'll be back on Friday night.
Okay, well, we send our best to, in our regard to Marcos Hernandez and, and get well soon. I know that he's, uh, he wasn't able to do our, our game broadcast and he's been with us for 20, 20s.
Twenty-eight years.
Twenty-eight years. So hope he gets well soon. Unless anybody has any further comments or.
No, let's go on.
Okay.
Thank you. For the last report, we have the dyslexia program. Mrs. Perez, Edna Perez. And this one's about three to four slides. Bringing some awareness to one of our programs.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Evening. So we could get our PowerPoint up.
Just hit the spacebar on the floor.
Okay.
Okay.
And then just hit the spacebar on the floor.
Oh, sorry. I'm just gonna do clicker. All right, so definition of dyslexia. And at any point in time, if we have questions, you know, feel free to interact and interject. Dyslexia is a language-based learning disability. Dyslexia is a general education mandate.
And I was just gonna point out there, because sometimes erroneously, the comment is made that, uh, oh, dyslexia, special education, you can be dyslexic and not qualify for special education. Now, having said that, some of the kids we do service through special education could meet the, uh, criteria for dyslexia. So I guess the, the simplest way to say that it's, dyslexia in and of itself isn't a category of disability that would qualify you for special education. And typically, we identify and service the, the kids through the 504 program. And really, I, what we should have written there is almost exclusively identified through the, the 504 program.
At this time, we have 345 approximate students being serviced under the dyslexia program at WISD. Dyslexia services that we offer at WISD are Orton-Gillingham based intervention programs, or program for that matter at this point, and we're looking into another program. We do have accommodations for the students through the instructional setting and through assessment. There is also coordination between teachers and administration on, uh, how students are doing. And that's typically done through the care sessions or, or SPAS, uh, whatever the different campuses call it. And there's definitely trainings happening across the district throughout the school year for dyslexia and, uh, the different components that we need to address, typically reading, writing. Here at WISD, we do go above and beyond for dyslexia. We have parent meetings. In those parent meetings, we address issues and/or questions about what is dyslexia? How to help your child at home, perhaps with homework? And even with the transition as to how to, uh, get the assistance over at the collegiate level through the various accommodations because students identified with dyslexia also get accommodations at the college level. We also have here at WISD, a progress monitoring program that most other districts do not have. And we basically monitor the students in the beginning of year, middle of year, and end of year to determine progress or lack of for students who have dyslexia through a program that we call the ECCBM. We also, here at WISD, again, going above and beyond, there's a dyslexia progress report that goes out as often as twice a year. Again, just to let parents know, are we on track or not on track? Those are the expectations. Another above and beyond, and here I wanted to take time to thank many of you. We have a dyslexia 5K. And at that 5K, we have promoted awareness and community involvement. In addition to the fact that its main and sole purpose is to generate scholarships for students with dyslexia. And that's not normally done in other school districts. Up to now, we've awarded five, uh, scholarships to students with dyslexia. What is up and coming for dyslexia, uh, program is that we are going to provide, uh, another intervention program joining, uh, up with Susan Barton, and that will be Herman Method. With the Herman Method, we will be able to provide intervention services to a group of students versus a one-to-one basis. We will provide additional staff development to meet the needs of, of the teachers and the students especially. We will continue with the modules that TEA is offering. And most importantly, I will try to promote Module One, which is the basics and the nuts and bolts of what is dyslexia across the district. We are also, uh, looking at year two of a, a program to address the orthography. Usually students who have dyslexia have, uh, bad handwriting and are issues with handwriting. And last year, we purchased part of the program of handwriting without tears. This year, we are purchasing additional materials to help these students. And, uh, another initiative that the district has that is definitely helping students with dyslexia, and they're implementing it across all elementaries, is the SIPs initiative. Again, targeting phonemic awareness, phonological awareness, fluency, vocabulary, and, and the various reading components. And that's what we have for dyslexia.
I see your plan, above and beyond.
Yes.
And to just ensure that we meet the needs of these students. We had a parent earlier, she had some concerns, make sure that we meet all their needs. Good plan, let's implement it.
Yes, sir.
How does, uh, you know, I know you talked about identifying through the 504. But what, so what, take me through that process real quick, you know? Is it, how do you identify?
Yeah, basically, it's a, it's a referral that's initiated at the campus to 504. There's, uh, literally, we're required to obtain parental consent, uh, also, uh, provide them some additional information about the, the actual process itself. And then the, the paperwork gets turned in to us. And we actually have, uh, two diagnosticians. An additional one was hired two years ago to help us meet the timelines. And so, uh, the almost exclusive responsibility of those two diagnosticians is to process those evaluations.
And those identified, how often do they get, uh, help, treatment sessions?
So it's gonna depend on the need and the committee decision and the intervention program being implemented. So, uh, for best, um, effectiveness, if you will, the program does recommend at least four to five times pullout, uh, for a 45 to an hour type of session for maximum effectiveness.
Is that what we're doing right now or?
It's gonna depend on the individual and each student. So some students might get a pullout of four times a week. Some students might get a pullout of five times a week. So again, the committee makes that decision based on what their need is and what intervention program they're implementing.
Do the teachers who have the non-special ed identified dyslexic students receive any kind of training and, uh, making accommodations for dyslexic students?
Yes, so currently, um, using Susan Barton, uh, once upon a time, they had brought in training for Susan Barton. Then we have provided trainings on the dyslexia handbook, which I'm gonna be giving to Rosemary to give to each and every one of you all. And basically, these are the bylaws and guidelines for the state.
And Mr. Kennedy, I wanted to address, uh, your question with respect to the accommodations. Um, cause, and, and I didn't finish that process, Dr. Rodriguez. That once evaluation's completed, the, at the campus level, they get together a 504 committee. It's a committee of knowledgeable people, which includes the administrator, the parent and, uh, the, the child's teacher. And there they develop what's called an accommodation plan, should the kid qualify and meet the criteria for the section 504. And at that point, uh, they determine the accommodations that are needed. And they disperse the pertinent sections of the accommodation plan to the teachers who have to carry out these recommendations.
Okay.
Uh, additional training are the new dyslexia modules. So basically, TEA is, uh, aware of the fact that we need to educate, uh, Texas educators on what is dyslexia. And there are five modules of, uh, up and ready. So again, Module One is the actual nuts and bolts of what is dyslexia. And that's what I want to promote across the district, that, uh, every educator get the opportunity to somehow participate or view it or get the information.
And, and I was going to, to interject, Edna. And even TA recognized the need to increase the awareness of, of the, of the educators. And to that point, that's what, uh, Ms. Perez was talking about, that they developed those dyslexia modules. So it's up to us to, to get the word out so, so people can participate in that.
In addition to, with the new program Herman Method, that will involve, uh, staff development on how to implement that program as well.
Okay, great.
So I think you guys have a, a good program implemented, but, uh, do we, do you guys ever go back and check to make sure that all these kids are getting the needs, Matt?
So, yes, uh, through, through walkthroughs, through the ECCBM progress monitoring. If we notice that there is a trend based on the reports of students not progressing, let's say at a certain campus, we may get a point to visit and see what might be going on and, uh, why is it we're not moving forward? And, um, so it's addressed through that format.
If, uh, if a parent wants their child tested, what, what's the process on that? Do they, is there somebody at campus that they can contact?
Yes, Dr. Rodriguez, they'd approach, uh, the camp, uh, the campus. And at that point, each campus has a 504 point of contact. And, uh, at that point, they would complete the necessary paperwork to move forward.
Especially when, um, you have red flags, as in, uh, and the red flags for dyslexia would be, it runs in the family. So normally, when you do have other siblings or the parents themselves with dyslexia, you wanna pay close attention to that. And the new handbook, the whole intent of, the word here is to identify early. So, um, dyslexia, uh, I, I forget which House bill, um, just passed, now requiring every first grader and kindergartner to be screened at the end of the year for possible dyslexia characteristics. So that's new for this year.
Well, thank you so much, Edna and, and Neil, good job. Uh, I just wanna say that, uh, both of you are both passionate and compassionate on, on the field you have chosen to work. And, and as a board member sitting up here, we don't thank you enough for what you go through. I do wanna add that if at any time that there's need that you all, you all have, please bring it forward. You know, we, we need to serve our, our kids, our special, all our kids, but especially the special needs kids with, with compassion. And, and I don't want, uh, funding or anything to stand in the way of, of servicing our, our kids.
And if, at this time, sorry, uh, Mr. Lopez, if I may add, if any parent ever has any question and or concern or, or something to address, our doors are always open and our lines of communication are always open. So I'm gonna give my office phone number at this point. 969-6822. It's the special ed office, call us anytime. And, and basically, I'm addressing the public at this time. And my email is ednaperez@wisd.us.
Yeah, uh, we, we pride ourselves in taking every call and if we're not able to, returning every phone call.
Thank you, Neil.
And email.
Thank you. And, and again, if you, if you're understaffed, at any point you feel you're understaffed, please come forward to the superintendent and, and she will bring it to us and, and we will take care of it. I mean, there's, uh.
Thank you.
You know, if we get too busy sometimes, we, we work on production and, and the compassion might slip a little bit, but we cannot have that. We need to have compassion as a very forefront on, with our kids, our special needs kids.
And, and, and I did wanna close. You saw about the dyslexia 5K, our, our own superintendent ran and won some sort of award. You did win an award, right, Dr. Canales?
She was one of the top three females to finish the cross line this year.
Where at? When would this happen?
Uh, again, it, it's, uh, every spring, uh, that we hold the 5K. We're gonna hold it again, uh, this spring. Do we, I think we have a date, March 3rd. March the 3rd, and our theme is Hawaiian this year. Last year was, uh, country or western. And I wanna thank you guys, whoever participates, have donated. Oscar, you always give us the orange juices for the, for the cross line. And so, uh, again, thank you guys for all that you do for our program.
I did run, but I was just happy to finish.
I don't think he got an award.
It was fun, right?
Yes, it was.
And I think Dr. Canales reminded everybody that she finished ahead of me.
Well, thank you, thank you. Uh, just need to add, uh, little housekeeping here. Let the record reflect that Andrew Gonzalez left the meeting at 6:26. Uh, at this point, we'll move on. Is that it for your report, Doctor?
That is it, thank you.
And move on to item number 12, the consent agenda. And I'll start on my left, Dr. Rodriguez.
I've been in.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes, I wanna pull Q. Letter Q. And I wanna pull A on the minutes.
A?
A, yes, A.
Okay. Isidoro?
No.
Oscar?
No, I'm okay.
Patrick?
Nothing.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Okay, so. Your, uh, your motion is to approve the agenda with the exception of item A and Q.
Correct.
Okay. You have a second?
Dr. Hank.
Dr. Rodriguez. Okay, I have a motion by Sidoro and a second by Dr. Rodriguez. To approve the motion, uh, to approve the motion that's presented, which is approval of the consent agenda with the exceptions of item A and item Q, which have been pulled by Dr. Rivera. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, say no. Motion carries. Dr. Rivera?
Yes, on, on A, when we approved the tax rate, I recall I asked Dr. Canales and I asked Andres that we approved the tax rate. It was, uh, unpopular to some people. But I asked you all to give me a list of the million dollars at the next meeting, which was tonight, on how the money was going to be spent, and I didn't get it.
Okay, I'll respond to that. Dr. Rivera, we're still working on that. At the, uh, last board meeting, we talked about the district advisory committee team being involved.
We know, we asked the people to increase taxes, we asked them. So we had no idea how we're gonna spend the money. Well, no, you don't. I asked you to give me the list, that's a month ago.
Okay, so we can, we can work on that. Our next stack meeting is in early November, we can up that and work on that. Um, if I was not, if I, maybe I didn't understand, uh, we can work on that.
Just a million dollars, where are you gonna spend the money? We asked the citizens, approve the, we approved the tax rate. You put us on the spot up here for us to increase taxes and we voted for it. And now we can't get a little list, how we're gonna spend the money? We asked, we, we approved it. That's what I'm asking for at the next meeting, I wanna see that list.
Okay. We can add it to the November on the report.
And on Q, you know, here, the budget's been in place for one month. And we asked for budget amendments already, a lot of them. You know, from one, there were 26. Okay, so when we approved the budget, were there problems with where the money was going to be spent? You got too many amendments for one month.
Yes, sir, I agree.
How many, how many were moved from the same function? You've got 29 different functions. How many did you approve from function to function?
Oh, we approved more.
How many?
Nah, I don't, I don't have a number for you, but I'll, I'll put it in the update.
So for one month, we made all these changes?
Yes, sir.
That was my concern, just an observation.
And I think, uh, as planning comes through, the principals do, uh, budget amendments on, on a monthly basis, depending on, on the need. And probably with staff development, a lot of the principals, you know, uh, the speakers of the head or any presentations, they need to do, you saw, a lot of them were, uh, for those particular areas. And I understand, Dr. Rivera, yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. When we approved the budget in September, we should have the budget already in place. People should know how they're gonna spend the money. But to have 26, I mean, that's just too many. Again, that's an observation.
And again, I think a lot of the times when the.
No, I understand what you're saying.
No, but I'm saying like.
It's just too many.
No, I understand. But a lot of times, the principals look at the data, once they receive the final data.
I understand all of that, just too many.
But the principal have a right to do that.
Yes, they do. But there's not good planning though, on September the 1st. I understand.
Well, I guess, uh, at your principals' meeting, Dr. Canales, bring it up and discuss it as to why this happened or how this happened and, uh, and see what we can do to correct it.
Okay, and we have.
Now, Dr. Rivera, on your, on your first poll, which. Now, Dr. Rivera, on your, on your first poll, which was item A, I know that the superintendent stated to me, and that the million dollars is coming, and yes, we did approve the tax rate going forward, the money's not here yet.
No, I understand.
The money's not here yet. And they're planning on their meetings, on their construction meetings and our facilities committee meetings, to see what they can do with that, where that million dollars would be better spent.
I understand.
You know, so...
But we told the citizens, we're going to increase taxes by two pennies, there should have been a plan, how are we going to spend the money? That's all I'm saying.
The only thing that was...
There was no plan.
The only thing that came out, and I know that the public outcry was, make sure that we're not hiring new people. And that was guaranteed to us by the superintendent and by staff, that no new people would be hired going forward.
I just need a list.
And you will get a list.
Juan, just a word, we will create the list, the money won't be available to 2018. So as we review data and things come in, that list may be reprioritized.
We told the citizens, we're going to increase taxes by two pennies, where was that plan? How are we going to spend the money?
Yes, yes, we can get the tenant list.
That's all I'm asking.
Okay, we can get the tenant list.
Okay. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
If I pull these two.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Oscar Calero to approve items A and item Q of the consent agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving forward to item number 13, discussion items. Item A, interim financial report for the month ended September 30, 2017. We want to run those together. Okay, we're going to do item A, then we'll do item B, acknowledgement of Hidalgo County Tax Office Collection Report for August 2017, current taxes and delinquent taxes. And then we'll do C, presentation of annual tax collection report for fiscal year 2016, 2017, September 1, 2016, through August 31, 2017, by Hidalgo County Tax Office. This is all one item, I believe. Is that correct, Andres? Or different presentations?
B and C are separate presentations.
Okay.
Mr. Lopez, Dr. Canales, members of the board, on the financial report for the month ended September 30, 2017, on the general fund, and the reason I gave you a separate report is because I put the wrong several reports when we sent it on the agenda, I apologize for that. On the general fund, which is the first report in the agenda item, for the local revenues out of 26.3 million, we only collected 97,000, which is basically the prior year taxes. Now, the local revenue says 0.37%. On state sources, out of 131 million, we collected 16.2 million, which is 12.4%. Federal sources, 14.7 million, we collected only 4,000, we still haven't filed any reports to get money yet, which is 0.03%. The total revenues is 172 million, we received a total of 16.4 million, which is 9.52%. On the expenditures, out of 170.4 million, we spent or encumbered 12,77,000, which represents 7.09%. Under any questions? This is the first month of the year, those are very low key amounts on everything.
So there's no issues at this point, because it's too early?
No.
This is the first time I've been on the board for the beginning of a school year. Is this normal?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, the current taxes don't start getting collected until November, and the big ones are December and January.
Okay, good to know.
I'm waiting for direction of V. Savonjampa.
Go ahead. Item B, acknowledgement of Hidalgo County Tax Office Collection Report for August 2017, current taxes and delinquent taxes.
The report from the month of August 2017, as provided by the Hidalgo County Tax Office, showed that we had, for the current levy, we collected $22,895,000, which represents 94.78%. That is 0.29% higher than the prior year. That is a very high percentage of collection. We had budgeted only 91, in the prior year, we had been collecting 93, 93.5%. So we got almost an extra 1.3% this year. So that will help out with the revenues at the end of the fiscal year, when we finish the audit, that'll show more revenue. And on the prior year taxes, the prior levies, we collected 1,158,000, which represents 27.61%, that is 0.13 higher than the prior year. We had budgeted only 20%. Our goal was 27, so we did meet the goal, 27.6%. On the annual report, basically, this was to be presented by the Hidalgo County Tax Assessor.
Is that item C?
Item C, yes. Basically, the same thing that I had, they have the annual report, and they go over the amounts, and I'll read quick the amount that they have. For the current taxes, they had $22,895,436. They collected $274,000 of penalty and interest, and they paid attorney fees of $44,229. And that one isn't the agenda, that I did not give you a copy of this one. It's on screen. On the delinquent taxes, they had, on the base taxes, they collected $1,158,548, and a penalty and interest, $544,800. And they pay attorney fees on those prior year taxes, $257,571. On robot taxes, they collected $22,431 on base tax, they collected $5,100 on penalty and interest, and they pay attorney fees of $2,387. Total taxes was $24,76,415. Penalty and interest collected was 800, almost 824,000, and they paid 304,000 to the delinquent tax attorneys. That is the basic summary of the report that they have. Any questions?
Neil? Thank you, okay. Before we move on, I'd like to add a comment on our just past discussion items that we had on our consent agenda. Dr. Rivera and our superintendent, and of course Andres, will get together. I know our principals are a little shocked out there in the back. And we will address Dr. Rivera's concerns, which I'm sure they have some basis to them, and we will get direction as to what needs to happen. I believe that your needs are there, you all did what you felt was correct, and we will, the superintendent will address them with Dr. Rivera and Andres, and then our superintendent will address you all at your weekly meetings. So I'll move forward with that.
Let me, let me just make a comment here, and I understand, I know next month, you're going to bring some more, I understand that. All I'm saying, for the first month, these are too many budget amendments for the first month, we just approved the budget. So don't get me wrong, I'm not saying don't submit any. My only point was that it was too many. And even from 11, how many, from different functions, how many were, did you approve on this that are not even here? That's what I'm saying, just a little better planning. I'm not saying, things come up, and I understand that, but they're just too many for one month. So please don't get me wrong, I'm not going to bring it up again next month, there's, you made them, I want you all to make them because you put your money where you need it. I understand that. But again, my only point, just a simple point, that it was too many for the first month of school. That's the only observation. But again, keep on making these as you need them.
Well, we'll make sure, Dr. Rivera, you can discuss it further with our superintendent and Andres.
No, I don't need to anymore, she already knows what I'm saying. So does Andres.
And then, just to add, another thing that we've added in the process is our principals working with our assistant superintendents and me to review the amendments prior to getting them to the business office for final inclusion. So Mr. Aguilar Peterson and I discussed that recently.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item number 14, discussion and possible action items. Item A, discussion and possible action on nominating candidates to serve the Hidalgo County Appraisal District Board of Directors for 2018, 2019, and approval of resolution for nomination. That's it. Dr. Canales?
Okay, Board of Trustees, we're recommending that you discuss and possibly nominate from one to five candidates to serve on the Hidalgo County Appraisal District Board of Directors for 2018, 2019, and to approve the resolution for nomination. The governing body of a taxing unit is entitled to nominate candidates for the Board of Directors for the appraisal district. Members who are elected will serve for a two-year term effective January 1, 2018. You have a list of current members of the Board of Directors for the appraisal district. The selection process is as follows, the presiding officer, our board president, Mr. Lopez, of the unit submits the names of the nominees by written resolution to the chief appraiser before October 6, 2017. The presiding officer should include the address of the nominee so that the chief appraiser can notify the winners. Then from there, there is a ballot. Wesaco ISD this year will have a total of 155 votes, and then each voting unit shall cast its vote by written resolution and submit it to the chief appraiser before December 15, 2017. So we're presenting you with a resolution and allowing you to discuss and possibly nominate one to five candidates.
Andres, there's five names on the, as candidates, right?
No.
This is not your...
No.
Okay. Well, there's five names. Now, if we pick more than one, the point, the votes get distributed between those two names?
You can cast the votes in any way that you want for one candidate, or distribute them among the candidates that you nominate that are, you know, and they're named on the ballot.
So our deal would be to nominate one person to get more bang for our buck?
Yeah, the names that are on there actually are the current Board of Directors for the appraisal district, so you have the ability to nominate one or more. But the names on there are those that are currently sitting on the board.
I would move to nominate David Hernandez, he's been a, he's a citizen from Wesaco, and he's been on that board, so I would nominate him.
I'll second the nomination. Okay. So we have a nomination of David Hernandez by Isidoro and a second by Patrick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. David Hernandez. Yes, and he is a Wesaco resident, and you said, so I support him, and that's good. Item B, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of proposal award for voluntary employee insurance benefit products. Item one, accident. Item two, cancer. Item three, disability. Item four, critical illness. Item five, hospital indemnity gap. Item six, term life and accidental death and dismemberment. And item seven, vision, proposal number 18-10-09. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, the district conducted an RFP, over all 27 proposals were submitted for the various products requested. SWBC, the district's employee benefit consultants evaluated the proposals based on coverage, value of benefits versus price, ease of administration, and age band rates versus three-tier composite rates. SWC made the recommendation to administration, and we are recommending that the Board of Trustees approve the proposal awards from the following vendors based on the evaluation and recommendation from SWC Employee Benefits Consulting Group. And we do have Mr. Massey and Mr. Andrew Graves with us, Groves, right, excuse me, with us today that can answer any questions. So for accident, the recommendation was all state. Cancer, all state. Disability, Cigna. Critical illness, all state. Hospital indemnity, gap, all state. Term life, ADD, Cigna, and vision, how do you say that? Avisis. And this will be for January 2018 through December 31, 2018.
Are any of these insurance companies incumbents? Are they all new?
Mr. Gervasa?
All new. Do you agree with the recommendations?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the vendors or the insurance agents as presented by our consultant and administration to go with item number one, accident, all state. Item two, cancer, all state. Item three, disability, Cigna. Item four, critical illness, all state. Item five, hospital indemnity, gap, all state. Item six, term life and ADD, Cigna. Item seven, vision, Avisis. Any discussion?
How many submitted proposals?
Twenty, I have 27, is that correct?
Had some questions on the, on the vision.
I'm pretty familiar with most vision plans out there, and just wanted to see, you know, what, you know, about this particular plan, do we, you know, do we ask current enrollees or, you know, participants, you know, do we get any feedback from, from these members in regards to how they like their plan, their vision plan?
From the employees at Wesaco ISD?
Or just in general, from your experience?
No, we did not, we did not get feedback from, from employees at Wesaco.
What I can add is they are, they are required to submit references in their proposals, so within their proposal materials, they, they provide references of other clients that they have.
You know, now, a lot of these plans, you know, it looks great on paper, you know, and some of these, they just don't translate well.
Right.
And, you know, unfortunately, I think, you know, that's, that particular one is, is one of those, you know, and it's just a little, my two cents in on that, you know, I don't think that's, you know, the best option that could have been provided, especially since employee, they're paying for it, you know, it'd be nice for them to get something that's better for their money, you know, and then, you know, that's just my opinion on that, you know, knowing, you know, working with these companies for 18 years now, and, you know, just wondering what the, what the decision-making was on that.
We were looking at price and value for the employees. We do have experience with the Avisis, it's written, it's backed by the Guardian paper, so that, you know, it is a better-than-A-minus rated type company. And we do have a lot of experience with them in the state of Texas. Well, actually, we have a lot of experience with them nationally, and they do a decent job, and they do pay their bills. So there's, as you say, there's all kinds of vision companies, anywhere from, you know, Superior to Utopia to IMED and all others, but for the value, for the benefit, for the dollars.
Did the insurance committee look at this?
No, sir.
How come?
There was no time, it was a timing factor for this.
Why was there no time?
A lot of factors.
Couldn't you have gone earlier?
No, no, sir. It's just the way, the way the...
Because they're paying for this, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
They're paying for this, so they should have input as to what is being selected for them. We're picking for them, really.
Well, if we want a consultant to...
In the past, didn't you have insurance committees?
Yes, we did, sir.
Is there time?
No, sir.
Rather than time. Okay, now, the only one that's brought up on here about is, you said the vision, Doctor?
Yeah, that's the one, I'm...
Why do you have concerns about it?
Just from, from just the whole, the way the whole plan plays out with a patient from the time they come in to time the delivery of their materials, you know, there's just certain obstacles that, you know, doesn't, has been an issue with that particular plan.
Is there a possibility of choosing two for the vision?
No, sir, they, no, sir, they won't, they won't compete. If you were 20,000 employees, two companies would compete in the same market, but they won't do that.
Okay.
I mean, you could, I mean, the other options, if the board so chose, it would be our recommendation to go with the Avisis, you know, based off on our analysis. If you wanted to stick with the incumbent, which is Superior, that actually made the list, the cut, if you wanted to just stay put.
I know that both Superior and Utopia are pretty good. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not all there, but I think those are the two vision programs that are pretty good for, for staff, no?
Well, what I can, what I can tell you a little bit of overview is, we received nine vision proposals. nine vision proposals.
Correct.
Now, we have to go off of the way that the, the RFP is written.
Right, correct.
In the RFP, one of the requirements is that the insurance company had to have an A-minus or better rating.
Correct.
And we were not able to find that Itopia had that rating, so we were not able to choose them in the scoring. But we do have, if you'll look at our scoring sheet, we did choose a top three.
Correct.
Our recommendation was the Avisis, but there are others on there that we certainly, it's certainly up to whichever way you would like to go.
And Superior was one of the top three, correct?
Yes, sir.
Mike, how was Superior? Did, do you have any concerns or complaints with Superior?
No, sir, we haven't had any issues that I'm aware of with Superior. Of course, when we do have issues like that, we do look into them, but we always refer them to the agent also to help them rectify any issues, but we haven't had any issues with Superior. If it make, we can certainly, however, whatever the board decides to do, we can monitor that plan, and if we do have issues with it, we can always take that one particular one out to bid next year. We've done that in the past, when we have problems with the voluntary product. When renewal time comes around, we'll recommend renewal of every one except one particular one. We have done that before.
Dr. Rodriguez, I will follow, or I will go along with whatever you want to do on this, on this particular, on the vision. Now, you're optometrist, hello, so you have firsthand experience on, on this, and give us your recommendation. And if, I know we have a motion, if they want to amend it, then we'll go with whatever you're thinking. And we can do that, Ivan?
Yeah, a motion can.
Okay.
So do we, do we have, Mike, would you think, do you think we'd have some time to, to look over some more? You know, we just not vote on the vision? Is that something?
Dr. Rodriguez, I would recommend that we move on this as soon as possible because we do need to start the enrollment process, and that does take some time, so.
Well, I'll, you know, I'll trust with the consultant, you know, and if that's how they, they rank them, you know, if time is an issue, you know, I would like to, like Dr. Rivera said, you know, employees are paying for these, these voluntary products, you know, it would be good for them to have some say with their experience, you know, and see what they have to say in the future, yeah.
Excuse me real quick, but I know I spoke to a couple of people on the committee and they were kind of upset, you know, because I think their last two or three recommendations, we've gone against them, you know, so, I mean, you know, I mean, we got to give and take, I guess, every now and then as well, you know, so, but they are upset, a lot of them are upset. But I would like to amend my, my motion and, and go with.
Well, I think Isidoro made the motion.
I did.
Did you make the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion, and I'll, on the vision, we will go with, I will, my, my motion will be for Superior Vision.
Is that legal, Ivan? We could do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So now my motion will be with all, for the exception of the vision for Superior Vision.
You got a second.
Oscar, I mean, Isidoro? Okay, we have a second, a motion by Oscar to go with all the recommendations with the exception of the vision, which he is recommending, or going with Superior Vision, seconded by Isidoro. Any discussion?
No, I, you know, the reason I, of course, you all heard why I amended my motion, and I do respect Dr. Rodriguez's opinion, and I know he does everything for the best interest of our community, our employees, and for that reason, I amended my motion, so.
Dr. Rodriguez, is that what you feel would be better for employees?
No, that's, I think, you know, it would be a better, the, the plan has been in place, and I think it would be a better, better option than the one recommended.
Okay. So the other six are all new? Well, we had, okay. I can't support it.
Okay, we have a motion by, by Oscar and a second by Isidoro to go with all the recommended items with the exception of vision and envision, they're, they're voting, we're going to be voting for Superior Vision. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
How many ayes do I have? Two, three, four. Okay. All those opposed?
I want to vote against.
I want against. Motion carries. Item C, discussion and possible action to consider selection of servicing agents for voluntary employee insurance benefit products. Number one, accident. Number two, cancer. Number three, disability. Number four, critical illness. Number five, hospital indemnity gap. Number six, term life and accidental death and dismemberment. And item seven, vision, proposal number 18-10-09. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, the recommended products included the agents, but you can select from all that submitted proposals. We received 14 proposals, and the list is provided for your consideration. The selection of servicing agents is at your discretion.
I'll make a motion to appoint the agents on all seven. That would include three agents to be shared equally, would be, let's see, Jeff Everett Associates, the Tames Financial Group, and Ivan Ortega.
You have a motion, can I have a second?
I'll second him.
Motion by Patrick Kennedy and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to go with three agents for servicing of the voluntary products being Jeff Everett, Tames Financial Group, and Ivan Ortega. Any discussion? I'll add that, well, the, all these agents are local, Alaska, really? Patrick?
Yes.
All, from Wesaco?
I believe all three are from Wesaco.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes, let me, let me just ask a question here.
Okay.
You have all of these agents, did you only evaluate them too? I mean, you evaluated the products, did you evaluate the, the agents too?
Two of the three we already work with, don't have any problems with them.
Okay, but were they evaluated with points?
No.
The two that worked with us this past year were who?
Tames Financial Group has worked with the.
Tames Financial Group has worked with the district for six, eight years, for, for a long time, so we've always had issues with them. I mean, we have not had any issues with them, excuse me. Mr. Everett was helping out with the Blue Cross and Blue Shield product that was awarded, not as an agent, but as an, as an enroller. And so, yes, we do have experience with two out of the three.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item D, discussion and possible action to approve a procurement method of construction for the building improvements for the, an advanced manufacturing technology, technology shop at Joe Calviou Kate Complex. And we're going to be doing number one, board determination procurement method for the construction that will provide the best value to the district for the project. Item two will be board determination to retain, option two will be to, the board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposal to be received for this project or board delegation of their authority to the administration to rank the proposals to be received. And number three, approval of a criteria and points to be used for ranking the proposals.
Is this a new building?
It's the end, the far west end of the Joe Calviou building.
Do it's a new program?
Yes, for the Early College High School. For the Early College High School, yes, Advanced Manufacturing Technology. So they're going to make a shop there and close the building at the end of the building.
Is there enrollment?
Yes.
That wants this class?
Yes, sir, there's enrollment for it.
How many?
We have the New Cummings one forward due to the vacant space, and that's at 16, 17 students, but there are students as seniors, juniors, and sophomores.
And the building will be ready by when?
By August.
By August, it's ready for next year?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion. One is sealed proposals. Two, for, for staff to recommend them with the criteria presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Isidoro Nieto to go with sealed proposals and the staff to recommend and to go with the criteria as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item E, discussion and possible action to approve a procurement method of construction for the building improvement for the welding woodworking shop project at the Peter Brigo Ag Farm Complex. We have number one, board determination of procurement method of construction that will provide the best value to the district for the project. Number two, board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project or board delegation of their authority to the administration to rank the proposals to be received. And then item three, approval of criteria and points to be used for the ranking of the proposals.
Is this also new?
Yes, sir. Peter Brigo Complex.
We have, we have the welding at the, at Kate.
Yes, but it's a new building. We're going to set up the welding and we're working shops there.
And you have the budget?
Yes.
How much?
We have money in the construction fund.
How much?
600,000 from the construction fund and 200,000 from the loan that we got, 17 million. For the prior item.
So there's a need again?
600,000?
I'm sorry, there's a need from, from students.
Oh, sorry, yes, yes, sir. The welding as, as well.
I'll make the motion. Again, same as the other one. Seal bids, staff to rank, staff to rank them and approve the criteria, criteria as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to, to go with sealed proposals and the staff to rank and to go with the criteria as presented. And this is on the, on the welding woodworking shop project at the Peter Brigo Ag Farm Complex. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
This is good also for the marketing with our kids?
Yes.
Can have other programs in Kate.
Very good, very good. Item F, discussion and possible action to approve a contract with Trinity MEP Engineering for each of the following projects. Item number, project number one, electrical upgrades at Margot Elementary. Item number two, HVAC replacements at Rodolfo Rudy Silva Elementary, Justice Raúl González Elementary, and Joe Calviou Kate Complex. Item, project number three, tennis court lighting at Wesaco High School and Wesaco East High School. And number four, Wesaco High School fire alarm security system design and administration buildings' fire alarm system design.
I'd like to approve the contracts.
And, and this is all for design? Is that correct, Ivan?
Yes, the board has already approved the engineer within April and, and July, but we just had him approve the actual contract.
Okay.
That's all the deciding is approval of the contract.
Okay. Make a motion?
Yes, motion to approve the contracts.
Second.
We have a motion by Patrick and a second by Isidoro Nieto to approve the contract. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to state for the public that Legal has already reviewed these and recommends the contracts, sorry.
Yeah, our, our office has a conflict because we do representation for Trinity Engineering as well as the district, and so administration got with Walsh Gallegos, George Grimes out of the San Antonio office to advise on, on the contract.
Okay, and I believe it's their recommendation that the contracts are silent.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion?
Is there an estimate on the cost of these projects?
I'm sorry, did I what?
An estimate, the cost?
Oh, yes, sir. We have it on.
I believe those, that's presented several times, and do you have something available that you can give us?
I have only the fees here, but we do have the amounts on the projects, and I can put on the update, I don't, I'm off the top of my head, but.
Can you put it on the update?
Yes, yes, no, we will. They're part of the loan.
Just the cost, the cost for each one?
Yes.
And what is the fee?
The, the fee for the.
Oh, all four?
All four is 143,500.
I'm sorry, the percentage?
No, this is on a fee basis. The only the HVAC project is on a 6 percent, the other ones have a fee, a set fee.
Which are 6 percent?
The HVAC project, the HVAC upgrades, it's approximately $75,000 for 6 percent of the project. We talk about 1,200,000.
So there's no fee on the other ones, more or less?
Well, uh.
Are we comfortable with the fee?
Yes, sir.
What they're charging us?
But that's smaller projects, so they're harder to go with a 6 percent on a small project, because a lot of these projects have the same type of work.
Okay.
The fees are there in the electrical system.
They're part of the second page.
And the lighting and the alarm system.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item G, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of a procurement method of construction for the HVAC upgrades projects for Rodolfo Rudy Silva Elementary, Justice Raúl González Elementary, and Joe Calviou Kate Complex. We have, we can do one, board determination of procurement method for construction that will provide the best value to the district for the project. Item two, board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project or board delegation of their authority to the administration to rank the proposals to be received. And item three, approval of criteria and points to be used for ranking the proposals. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on that. I know that we, is this the same point that we just had the engine, the, approve the contract?
Yes.
For the engineer, now we're.
Yes, the actual method of construction.
The actual method of construction. And we have typically gone with the sealed proposals and the staff to rank and the criteria as presented, user criteria as presented, so.
I'll make a motion to go with the competitive sealed proposals for the administration to rank and to approve the criteria.
Okay, so we have a motion by Patrick, is, do I get a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Rodriguez to go with the sealed proposals and the staff to rank the bid and the criteria to be used as presented on the HVAC upgrades at Rodolfo Silva Elementary and Justice Raúl González and Joe Calviou Kate Complex. All, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item H, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of tennis court lights, tennis courts lighting project at Wesaco High School and Wesaco East High School. Dr. Canales. Well, no, wait a minute, I'm not done. Board determination of a procurement method to construction that would, let me stop meeting like this. Board determination of procurement method to construction that would provide the best value to the district for the project. Number two, board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project or board delegation of their authority to the administration to rank the proposals to be received. And number three, approval of the criteria and points to be used for ranking the project.
I'll make the motion. Seal bids, staff to rank, point as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Isidoro to go with the sealed proposals, sealed bids, staff to rank, and the criteria to be used as presented on the tennis court lighting projects at Wesaco High and Wesaco East High School. Is there any further discussion?
And this is your cost, more or less?
Yeah, about 700,000.
And it's budgeted?
Yes.
And by when will they finish for this year? What is the date?
We have it here, by June, June 14th, the estimated substantial completion date, both campuses.
I think it was timed because a lot of those, well, the high school tennis lights are old, and I don't believe East High School had any light.
They don't have any lights.
If I remember correctly.
High School only has half of them.
Half of them, okay.
Another positive thing for Wesaco ISD.
All right.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Moving on. Thank you, principals. Moving on to item number 15, closed meetings to discuss personal matters, Texas Government Code 551.074. Number one, employment of person. matters, Texas Government Code 551.074. Number one, employment of personnel. Number two, resignations. Number three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. Item B, consultation with attorney regarding, A, a pending or contemplated litigation. Item B, a settlement offer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the Westco ISD under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflict with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Time now is seven fifty-two, and this board is going into closed session. Principals, thank you so much for staying here, and all the public also. Time is eight thirty-four. We are back in open session. Item A, personnel matters, Texas Government Code 551.074. Item number one is employment of personnel. Dr. Canales?
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of contracts for certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Patrick, and a second by Isidoro to approve the recommendations by administration on the new hires. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number two is resignations. Dr. Canales?
Superintendent recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the resignations of certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Patrick, and a second by Oscar to approve the resignations as presented by administration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number three is deliberation regarding appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. That's a non-action item, Ivan?
That's right.
Okay, and then we have B, consultation with attorney regarding a pending contemplated litigation, settlement offer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney of, to the Texas, let me do that again. A matter in which the duty of the attorney to the Westco ISD under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflict with the Chapter 551 of Texas Government Code. Is that also a non-action item?
There's no action required, that's right.
No action required on that item. Then we have item number seventeen, adjournment.
Andrew's not here to move, so I move to.
All right, Patrick. Time is eight thirty-six, and this meeting is over. Thank you so much.